So the call was made, you ready to go?
Right.
Good evening, welcome to tonight's Jefferson Township Board of Trustees regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, August the 4th, 7:00 PM. I'd like to welcome everybody to have the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time I'd like to have a moment of silence to all the military firefighters, road workers, sheriff deputies, that serve our community here in fraud. Roll call please.
Justice McLaughlin, Justice McFlyer.
Present.
Justice Mann.
Present.
For the record, trustee McLaughlin is not present. We have no prior meeting minutes to approve. All business, trustee Mann, do you have anything?
Um, no, I will get it on the resolution.
Okay. Okay, under new business, trustee Mann, are you ready with that? The mailroom resolution?
Yes. Tracy, may I have a resolution number?
Twenty dash zero six one.
The Jefferson Township Board of Trustees authorize the township assistant administrator to make a list of all mail that comes in to the office and give the mail to the individual that it's addressed to, if that person is the fire chief, let's say the administrator, those individuals that have a title. And then he will give, that person will give that list to Tracy Edwards, the fiscal officer, and the additional mail that's left.
A second promotion to adopt a resolution for mail, that would be resolution twenty dash zero six one.
Yes.
Are there any questions?
You need one addendum to that trustee Mann. It's administrative assistant, not assistant administrator.
Administra-
Assistant, that's the title. So make sure you make that adjustment, but that's all.
Okay.
Any other questions? Roll call please.
Justice McLaughlin, Justice McFlyer.
Yes.
Justice Mann.
Yes.
Motion carries to- Another item of new business we have, township administrator has asked for just a simple approval from the board trustees to pay Stannicki Tractor and create a PO not to exceed $2,500 for the repairs to the new Holland. I move that we approve the payment of this bill to Stannicki Tractor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Okay. Next item of new business is a resolution to hire Jason Henry. I'm gonna do a fore reading. Can I have a resolution number please? Twenty dash zero six two. Tracy.
Do you have to make a resolution? Resolution twenty dash zero sixty two.
Thank you. Resolution number twenty dash zero six two, Jefferson Township Board of Trustees approve the hiring of Jason Henry as a seasonal road worker to the cemetery parks and road department of Jefferson Township Road Department effective July 16, 2020. Whereas the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees are working diligently to maintain the quality level of staffing and desire to provide adequate road maintenance, cemetery grounds maintenance, and capital improvements for Jefferson Township. And whereas it's in the interest of the township and its residents that the staffing level in Jefferson Township Road Department be upgraded to provide better response to bailing, nuisances, building facilities repair, and cemetery park maintenance. Whereas Jefferson Township trustees, along with the administrator, request to hire Jason Henry as a seasonal road worker and disclose the salaries as they currently hold for required certifications. Whereas the road department declares that these individuals are part of the measures necessary for the preservation of public peace, health, safety, general welfare of Jefferson Township, ensure adequate road, bridge, street, park, cemetery preservation of Jefferson Township. Whereas the Jefferson Township trustees granted authority to the township administrator to prepare and send out a conditional offer to Mr. Jason Henry under resolution twenty dash zero five five based on successfully passing a background check, driver's record review, and drug screen result, and this was completed. Whereas the county prosecutor's office has received and reviewed all concerns brought to the board by the seven twenty-two meeting, 2020 meeting, and have approved the hiring of J.C. Henry with no violations found in the Jefferson Township handbook and Ohio Revised Code. Whereas Jason Henry is hired with a starting wage of thirteen fifty per hour. Whereas Jason Henry's wages are compliant with current wage salaries for the roads, cemetery, and parks department set by resolution twenty dash zero five five. Therefore, be it resolved, the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees approve the hiring of Jeffy- Jason Henry as a seasonal road worker to cemetery parks and road department of Jefferson Township Road Department effective seven sixteen, 2020. May I have a second?
I have a second motion.
Trustee Mann, second in motion. Any questions?
Did you say July twenty third?
July sixteen.
No, you said, I would say July twenty fourth or twenty seventh. The resolution.
Twenty dash zero five five.
And then you have zero five seven instead of twenty seventh or twenty first. Just make it so you got the right date on record.
Seven twenty-two meeting?
Seven twenty-one.
It's a seven twenty-one meeting?
Yes.
Good, any other questions? Roll call please.
Justice McLaughlin, McFlyer.
Yes.
Justice Mann.
Yes.
Motion carries. Under new business.
Do you want me to cancel my petition? Do you want me to just the signature your name?
I can pass this one down. Okay, under new business, second item I have should be twenty dash zero six three. This is a resolution for the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees to approve the minutes to be prepared, word for word, for the entire year 2020. I make a motion to adopt-
What was that number?
Twenty dash zero six three. This is at the advice of our legal counsel.
A second motion.
Any questions?
Who's going to appropriate them?
What's that?
Who's going to appropriate them?
Well, we're gonna get it typed word for word first.
Who's going to appropriate them?
You're the keeper of the minutes, Tracy.
Well, I'm not appropriate them. I'm gonna have to go right now, I'm not doing anything with the minutes. So we ordered them and sent them on the website. You hire somebody to do them, you find out somebody to finish it up and get them approved.
Okay, can we have roll call please?
I only keep the minutes. I want that on record, I'm only the keeper of the minutes, I don't do the minutes. Justice McFlyer?
Yes.
Justice Mann?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Did you fill in the blank where it says road before I have the road list of the blank?
Yeah, I did, fill that in.
Did you miss it or?
Twenty dash zero six three.
Did you miss it or? I guess I want to change.
What do you want to ditch below me?
No, you don't want to, it's not a change, it's just a change.
Mr. Mann, do you have any other new business?
Are we still on resolutions?
Yes.
Okay.
We're on new, we're on new business, we're getting ready to head, head into-
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Let's go ahead and suspend rules and we'll go to resolutions. Trustee Mann.
Okay, I have a resolution, chief.
Would you like me to read?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Board of Trustees, Jefferson Township, Montgomery County, Ohio, resolution number, I'm not sure what that is.
I don't see it so.
The Jefferson Township Board of Trustees authorized the township fire chief to rehire probationary firefighter, tell two EMT set the wetlock back to the, to the fire department. We had a few others, but we ran into a problem with our company that does the drug screen and all that because of the water main break downtown. They can't do anything until another couple of days, so at least we got this one through, we have four or five more to go.
Okay, I make a motion that we adopt resolution number twenty dash zero six three.
No, uh, zero six zero.
Zero six zero?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you knew this was coming to the motion?
No, he gave it to us before, he gave it to you. You were out of the work, you were out of the office.
Good, any questions? Roll call please.
Justice McFlyer?
Yes.
Justice Mann?
Yes.
Motion carries. Don't finish, trustee Mann.
Yes, go ahead.
Next resolution is twenty dash-
Which one is it?
This is the one that's on the agenda.
Oh, five nine.
Twenty dash zero five nine. Resolution is Jefferson Township Board of Trustees accept the resignation of Joseph Combs, part-time road worker at Jefferson Township's road department. I'm moved to adopt resolution number twenty dash zero five.
I have a second.
I don't have a copy of that.
This is my own file. Can we come here, copies?
I can get one out of Mr. McLaughlin's packet and give it to you.
Roll call please.
Justice McFlyer?
Yes.
Justice Mann?
Yes.
Can you give this Tracy or?
You can give, you give him your-
I'll give him mine.
I'll give it to him.
Okay. Trustee Mann?
Yes.
We've got one, we need to go back to new business briefly. In the work session, we discussed the Ohio, Ohio issue two paperwork for the Derby Road project. This is gonna be the first phase. Uh, Mr. Wolf, we just need a simple approval.
Yeah, simple approval, directing or giving the, the authority to the fiscal officer to meet with the Ohio Public Risk folks, probably by internet with COVID-19, or discussion by phone, to fill out the same paperwork that was authorized in 2019, which included the promissory note and the encumbrance of, of revenue or money to be able to apply for this loan or this project. And, and that has to be done to this project only by the fiscal officer, nobody else can sign the paperwork.
What does the paperwork say your name was?
Because I am the person that, that helped apply for the grant to start with, but-
And has their signature booked, signed?
Well, it, it, it has to be your signature guaranteeing the funds are there. And that's what they have to have.
And I don't, you guys know right now, I can't guarantee any funds are there until we have a projected budget for the year that we're paying them. If I don't have a projected budget, I will not be signing any paperwork.
You already did in 2019, guaranteeing the funds.
We don't have a projected budget, that was for this year. When is this project gonna start?
Um, 2021.
But we don't have a projected budget for 21, I will not be signing any paperwork until we have a projected budget for 21.
Trustees, just so you know, the promissory note guarantee was, was signed in 2019, and it legally binds the township if you accept the funds. When you chose to vote to accept the funds and start the project, you're committed to that note. So that paperwork has to be signed or else you forfeit 200-plus thousand dollars that comes to this community to fix Derby Road.
I will not be signing anything until I guarantee there will be some funds, I'm not promising anything that we don't have. If you don't have a projected budget, I can't work with.
Trustee Mann, I'd like to make a motion to give simple approval authorizing the fiscal officer to sign the finance application for the Ohio Pattern Works Grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays?
Again, as a matter of record, I will not be signing or working with them until I have a projected budget from the trustees. If I have to say it again, I will.
Let's move on to fiscal officer's report.
I don't have anything to report, you don't listen to me anyway, so I'm passing out. All I want to tell you is just check to sign, that's the only important part.
Uh, Mr. Vice President, I have one other resolution here.
Good. This is gonna be under new business?
Yes. Can I get a resolution number? Is this gonna be zero six four?
Tracy.
You, you can ask, I just have a name, okay? If you're talking to me, please address me by my name. Yes, it will be two twenty dash zero six four. I take my time to address you guys by your name.
Okay, the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby adopt the standard procedure that no software, email, data, or information owned by the township will be loaded onto or used in any non-owned Jefferson Township technology equipment for any reason without a direct written consent of the Jefferson Township trustees through resolution.
A second motion to adopt resolution twenty dash zero six four. Questions? Roll call please.
Justice McFlyer?
Yes.
Justice Mann?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, under fiscal officer's report, I make a motion to pay the bills, invoices, appropriations, warrants for this cycle.
I have second motion.
Roll call please.
Justice McFlyer?
Yes.
Justice Mann?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, that takes us to departmental reports. Captain Flyak, you're up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the month of, uh, July, we had 760 calls for service, seven felony arrests, seven misdemeanors, 24 traffic stops, 18 citations, checked on 36 alarms, uh, received 14 drug complaints, four dumping complaints, had an uptick in mental health related calls of 21, three overdoses, and, uh, checked on 15 suspicious situations, vehicles, persons. Overall, our crime is down 15% over 2019 and 18% over 2018. Our Part One violent crimes are down 25% over last year and 39% over 18. Our Part One property crimes are down 3% over 2019 and down 11% over 2018. US 35 corridor between the connector and Union Road, including the Platte areas, and then State Route Four and Frytown areas saw the most activity during July. Ohio Public Safety stats for crashes, 10 crashes in township during July, that's a decrease of four, we had 14 this time last year. It's a decrease of 28.57%. Nine of the crashes were minor injury, one was serious injury, three were hit-and-run crashes. Fair to control and fair to yield the right of way for leading causative factors at three each. US 35 had the highest number of crashes at four, followed by State Route Four with two. The period between 0800 and 1559 hours resulted in six crashes, with Friday having the most during this time of two, followed up by 1600 to 2359 period with four crash occurrences, kind of spread out at one each over the days that we did see them. Overall, Friday was the most crashes, followed by Saturday, and then followed by Wednesday. July 4th, we were dispatched to 100 block of Iona, reference the deceased subject in the yard, special investigations is handling the follow-up on that investigation, and we were able to identify the individuals through DNA. On July 13th, 2020, Second Watch Jefferson crews were dispatched to the 5100 block of Ballard on the report of a stabbing. And when we got there, we had a victim that had been stabbed, but, uh, it had occurred in the city of Trotwood. Medics responded, were moved to the hospital, and Trotwood PD showed up to handle the follow-up investigation. On July 23rd, 2020, Second Watch Jefferson crews were dispatched to the area of Bricker and Keltner, reference a shooting that had possibly occurred overnight. We eventually located a victim who had high-threatening gunshot injuries. A suspect was identified through talking to him, and we secured an address on Bricker Avenue as we searched for the suspect. He was not present. We did find the scene, however, the forensic services unit came out to process that, and Jefferson Township's Detective Phelps will be handling the follow-up on that case. On July 26th, 2020, at 01:38 hours, Jefferson crews were patrolling the area of the K-9 Club at Four in Frytown when they believed they heard gunshots. They responded in, and subsequent investigations revealed that the club security encountered a subject inside who fired a gun and attempted to fire again when his gun jammed. Security latched on to him to wrestle him outside the establishment where he fled the scene. There were no injuries to any of the patrons present, and, uh, special investigations is handling that follow-up investigation. We didn't have any roadway clean, roadways cleaned in Jefferson during the July due to the ongoing suspension of the inmate worker program. We do have Deputy Aitman who has been signed to follow up on a lot of the complaints and such out here, so, um, we figured the next best thing would be to try to be to remind him of some of the areas. He's currently assigned to the Environmental Crimes Unit, so we're going to make as good a use of him as we can. He's generated several dumping, uh, reports for July, worked with the Township Road crews to get several areas cleaned up. Tires removed from like, uh, 120 knocks over there at the old elementary. He also, uh, made contact with the management of Family Dollar along Third Street, Paul Tuckett there. Lot of trash that originates out of those dumpsters and is, uh, in the tree lines and along the side of the building and everything. So he's working with, uh, management and may, and may end up working with the original management as well on that, but they're working to come up with a plan to better secure those dumpsters, get adequate dumpster coverage in place and, and kind of get that cleaned up and keep it clean. The updated crime watch signs are in, so we've been, uh, updating the ones that are currently in place, and then we'll work to get them pushed out to some of the newer areas, but I think we got about 16 of these throughout the township, uh, as of this afternoon. Any questions for me?
Do you have your home number on the sign?
Yeah.